This meeting of July 21st, 2014, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Verhaske?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Seagert?
Here.
Mr. Strilo?
Present.
We're on our own for Pledge of Allegiance, so try to remember the words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board approve the minutes of the previous Board meetings, a regular meeting on June 9th, 2014, the strategic planning session on June 23rd, and 2014, and the special meeting held on July 7th, 2014.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the meetings of the previous Board meetings, a regular meeting on June 9th, 2014, the strategic planning session on June 23rd, 2014, and the special meeting held July 7th, 2014. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Brings us to Board Salutes. Mr. Bytine.
Yes, I do. I'm not sure this has been heralded from this table at this point yet, but back on June 18th, although not a member of our district, certainly someone who no less serves our community and provides a useful service here to our district, Stacy Becker gave birth to a daughter, Sydney, on June 18th, and we want to congratulate her and her husband and understand how and the baby are doing very well, and kudos to them. Perhaps to balance that a little bit, as many of you know or some of you know, my father passed away about a month ago, and that required me to miss a couple of meetings. I want to thank the Board and the staff for their outreach, for the kind notes and emails that I receive from everyone. I appreciate that at a very hard time, and thank them for their kindness. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Verhaske.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout-out to some of our buildings and grounds people who are presently here, Mr. Brill Burkhardt, Charlie Claussen, and the firemen for coming to Washington Middle School on June 29th, and I guess partly the 30th, to aid in preventing what could have been a potentially worse situation as far as the flooding of the roof. So, I want to thank you very much, Bill and Charlie, for being here, and again, thanks to the Fire Department for their efforts.
Great. Thank you.
And I have one, just a letter that came from Michael Dear, kind of the founder and chairman of the Eagle Eyes on the Future Committee, and a first citizen of Dubuque, and he had presented a letter to both Superintendent Rheingans and the Board, talking about one of our very own, and that being Jean McDonald, principal at Sageville Elementary School. His letter goes, "Being the caring and genuine person that Jean is, last year Jean could detect that several of her students were in distress. These three children were from one family. Jean sought out the situation and found out that these three children, along with their mother, had fallen on hard times. Jean contacted Operation New View, plus another agency, and they in turn did contact the Eagles to help them out." And they obviously came to their assistance and made sure that family had a great -- this was back in the fall and Thanksgiving, and he commented that this was made possible because of a very special person that makes a difference in the lives of others, Jean McDonald. Jean's interpersonal feelings made this possible. Special people make special things happen in their life's journey. This is Jean McDonald, a special person who makes a difference." So, we're very excited to celebrate that with Jean and congratulate her on a job very well done.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I got a couple here.
Go.
First of all, I want to recognize Caleb Van Natta in the back row. Caleb, you want to wave to everybody? Caleb is a proud Boy Scout. Now, it's one thing to show up at a school board meeting. That's bad enough. It's one thing to show up at a school board meeting at night when you're a student. It's another thing altogether to show up in the summer. So, Caleb is here working on his citizenship merit badge for the Scouts, and so it's great that we have Scouts that are committed to making America a better place tomorrow. Also, we have a special notice here from a gentleman named Michael Haggard, an email that was sent to the district that I'm just going to share real quick. It celebrates one of our staff members. I'm writing to share the great news that Joe Dolan, a science teacher from Roosevelt Middle School, has been selected through a competitive application process to join 49 other educators from across the country at the 2014 Siemens STEM Institute this summer. Sponsored by the Siemens Foundation and administered by Discovery Education, the Siemens STEM Institute is a one-of-a-kind program that promotes hands-on, real-world integration of science, technology, engineering, and math STEM in the classroom. At this week-long professional development experience held at the World Headquarters of Discovery Communications just outside of Washington DC, fellows will be exposed to leaders, personalities, and innovators whose work across STEM disciplines shape and define our world today. Congratulations to Joe Dolan for his commitment to learning new strategies and techniques to get Dubuque's students excited about STEM education and careers. Sincerely, Michael Haggard, Partnership Manager for Discovery Education.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Barton.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any persons in the room wishing to address the Board at this time? You'd step forward and do so. Caleb, nothing. Good man.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any Board members wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda for further Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to Facilities and Support Services. Seagert was so kind to chair that meeting, she didn't know that heading into it. I was a couple minutes late, but we appreciate you doing that, so part of that honor of chairing that is you get to go through, and as I told her, fortunately, there's no building projects wrapping up where you've got the four-page motion, so I think those --
Can we hold her over for another term?
Not at all, so.
So, we just have a few things that need to be approved that were discussed at subcommittee. I move that the Board of Education approve the shelter agreement with the American Red Cross.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the shelter agreement with the American Red Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the revised student fee schedule for the 2014-2015 school year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the revised student fee schedule for the 2014-15 school year. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 7 to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Kennedy Edition Remodel Project in the increased amount of $22,184.65.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 7 to Ports and Construction, Inc. on the Kennedy Edition Remodel Project in the increased amount of $22,184.65. Any discussion? I recall we are well within our budgeted contingencies, so. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 1 to Geisler Brothers Company on the Senior Library Roof and Insulation Replacement and HVAC Upgrade Project in the decreased amount of $1,052.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 1 to Geisler Brothers Company on the Senior Library Roof and Insulation Replacement and HVAC Upgrade Project, which meets the maximum words we can have in the title of a project. In the decreased amount of $1,052. Any discussion? We love decreases. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 2 to Tricon General Construction on the Elementary School Computer Labs Project in the increased amount of $3,088.39.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 2 to Tricon General Construction on the Elementary School Computer Labs Project in the increased amount of $3,088.39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 1 to Clower Development Corp., DBA Clower Construction Company on the Jefferson Student Corridor Locker Replacement Project in the increased amount of $4,222.72.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 1 to Clower Development Corp., DBA Clower Construction Company on the Jefferson Student Corridor Locker Replacement Project in the increased amount of $4,222.72. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, I would point out, many of those change orders were vetted and discussed at great length in the committee, so for those watching, wondering why we moved through those so quickly, they have been discussed.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve Straka Johnson Architects, PC, as the architect, engineer, and consultant on the senior renovation project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Straka Johnson Architects, PC, as the architect, engineer, and consultant on the senior renovation project.
What do we really know about these people?
I'm with you.
For the record, I did receive a phone call from George Davis, and he endorses this decision.
There you go. That's enough of this discussion. I would ask, maybe, Bill, if we could ask you to step forward, just kind of talk through the process that the staff used.
I know there's two Johnsons, and I can never keep them straight. Couple Johnsons running around. Who knows which one is.
Quick, Bill, quick. Grab the mic. I'd just like to go over the process. We use four companies expressed interest in providing architectural services for the senior high renovation. Each firm was given about an hour to present and then opened themselves up for questions. Myself, Dan Johnson, and Charlie asked many questions. Following the interviews, the district team discussed the ability of the architect based on a variety of factors, including architectural experience, the relevant experience estimating, maintaining project budgets, project management experience, and I think very important is their experience in large masonry construction, senior, as in the historical value of that building. I'd like to remind you that we, Buildings and Grounds, believe Straka Johnson has a demonstrated history of working in the parameters established for the school district, and they do an exceptional job of maintaining an overall project budget, solving problems, and being accountable to the Board, Buildings and Grounds, user groups, and the taxpayers. Therefore, we would come forward tonight recommending that an agreement be entered into with Straka Johnson as the architect, and if you approve that, I'll be back next month with a contract. We'll hammer that out next month, but they can start their work very soon. I'd just like to remind you about the timeline that is on the table right now. Between now and Christmas, the programming would be done. Calendar 2015 is when all your construction documents would be developed, so that would put you about Christmas of '16. Then the project would go out to bid during that winter project period, and then construction would begin in the summer of 2016. That's the schedule right now. It's subject to change, but that's the big picture from 10,000 feet.
Can you give me that one more time? Construction 2016?
Shovel in the ground, summer of '16.
And prior to that?
And prior to that, also. Programming? That's okay. Programming from now to Christmas. And to, I guess, clarify, programming would mean that's an input opportunity from the architects.
The plan, basically.
The plan, and we will designate usually two Board members to sit in on that, as well as good administration and teacher and lots of folks. And I think you'll recall that Straka Johnson kind of coined the phrase, "The Dozel Process", how they were very good with the user groups, controlled the cost and promises upfront, were able to remind everybody, the stewards of the taxpayer and the responsibility that comes with it, and they controlled it at the beginning. I also want to add that the Dozel process was such a success, the end of that process ended with a quarter of 1% of errors and omissions on that. That kind of caliber of architect, if he can continue that, and I'm going to challenge him to that, if he can continue that on a $20 million project, that's substantial savings at the end of it. Or some architects in our interview process said, "It's common to see 1% to 3%." I'll do the math on that, and there's a lot of potential savings there because of the quality of their drawings and being the problem solvers they are. So, it's, we thought through it very, very deep to make that decision, and who would be the best architect for that job. We believe Straka Johnson.
So, programming now to Christmas?
Yes, sir.
Shovel in the ground in 2016?
Yep. Construction documents, calendar '15.
Okay.
Take the whole calendar, whole calendar year. Then we'd bid it in the winter of '15, '16, January 2016, and then shovel in the ground.
Is that a, do you think that's a six-month project, a year project? Don't know if we have none.
I think Straka Johnson said it's a six-month project.
Six, was it, I thought it was five.
I mean, come on, you did Dozel in, what, two months?
No comment.
There's no expectations here, Marty. Don't worry about it. And it's not as if the whole community won't be watching every time they drive by North Grand View and Clark Drive.
And just finally, I thought you'd find this interesting, some of the questions we asked the architects, you know, besides the nuts and bolts. Mr. Johnson brought some forward, and I wanted to share them with you, and Straka Johnson did a very good job on this. One question was, "What does a 21st century school look like?" Another question was, "What's the difference between a learning environment and a student environment?" And we talked about compressing the schedule and what's the impact on students. So, they're tough questions. You know, you've got to think through them and have the experience, and we believe Straka Johnson answered those the best, their best agent for us.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, is Dubuque Senior High School the oldest high school in the state?
I'd have to look that up.
We're the oldest city. I think we have a fair shot at maybe being the oldest high school in the state. If it isn't the oldest, it's up there.
Yeah, it's a little tough.
You know, we can sit here and joke and laugh a little bit. This is a big deal to a lot of people. I think there's just excitement that we're going forward, and we've spent a lot of time on Hempstead, which was needed. And I was on the Board back when we, well, they'd done one, they had done the locker bays when I came on the Board. What a lot of people forget about Hempstead is that the reason that place got so much attention right away is that it was right on the heels of Columbine, and with papier-mache walls and no doors and lackluster security with a big exterior design, it would have been a mess if something like that would have happened at Hempstead. So, we had to play some catch-up, plus the fact that the school was just decaying. It was falling down. There were walls at Hempstead put in front of the previous walls because the termites had eaten through the walls. So, I think it's a lot of credit to the folks at Senior, which has always been such a strong facility, that they were able to be patient this long, but it is now a time. And I think it is really, really exciting for the folks at Senior High School and for a lot of our citizens who have pride in Dubuque Senior High School that something is getting done there, too. And I think it's great as a Board that we continue to go through our facilities plan and knock these projects off in a reasonable manner, like we had sketched them out. There's definitely a rhyme and a reason to this, and I'm personally very pleased that we are moving on Senior. It's exactly, Bill, as you had in your outline when we sat down and really brought order to this thing, you know, we've taken a lot of whacks at facilities planning, but our most recent one was about three years ago, and it was, and it's just like you envisioned in terms of knocking off these projects in the sequence that you basically suggested we knocked them off in. So, I'm personally excited, and I sense a lot of excitement from others in the entire community as well.
I'd like to jump in with a real quick commercial. You know, the process at Hempstead, or the improvements at Hempstead, Dozel Field, soon-to-be Senior High, Prescott, Carver, Roosevelt, all of those things are due to the 1 cent sales tax, which is now called the SAVE Tax, which, you know, this community voted into place with the help of a lot of our community partners 10-plus years ago. We have those dollars to continue to come for about another 15 years, but we just want to make sure the community is aware that if we hadn't had those sales tax dollars available to us, we'd be looking at bond referendums, we'd be looking at other ways to finance those projects. So, it really has been a difference-maker for us and something we want to thank the community for, and make sure that they know that we're being very responsible in looking at our facilities when we spend those dollars.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. I, too, am excited about being a former teacher at Senior. I'm very excited about seeing, having something being to be done there. And I'm just kind of curious on this, with the programs, I'm a rookie at this, so by program, do we mean is that the point to where that the input would be garnered from the administration, staff, et cetera?
That's correct. Everyone on the opportunity.
And the community.
From building officials to fire to police, to coaches, to principals, everyone has an input and help.
Exactly.
We're real excited.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would, my only comment would be, we're, this community is blessed. We have a lot of great relationships with a lot of architectural firms. You can see them, they're working around the district on various projects, so we certainly congratulate Marty and Ken on this, but we have tremendous relationships with many others that are very, very qualified, so we appreciate all that they do for us in addition. So, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education authorize and direct the Board President to execute the purchase agreement with Kenmo Farms, Inc. for property near Irving School on behalf of the district.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize and direct the Board President to execute the purchase agreement with Kenmo Farms, Inc. for property near Irving School on behalf of the district. Just as a reminder, there's a property and a home right next to Irving that has become for sale, and the district's going to acquire that so we can really improve the ingress and egress of that busy street and safety for the kids.
Absolutely.
That could be a game changer.
It's a double, it's a double lot.
Double what?
And it gives us some opportunities down the road to look at, as Mr. Donahue pointed out, some bus, some parking lot issues, some bus drop-off and pickup that's not on a busy street. So, it just seemed, it came available to us. We were approached by the seller, and it seems to make a lot of sense to have that in our pocket for future upgrades.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And do you want to do the motion?
Do you want to do the motion? Sure. I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented. Mr. Keller, will you present?
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Rheingans, just a couple things I want to discuss with you. Page 123 of your handout has the total expenditures for the year. Just want to remind you that this is really a cash basis report. We will now be taking these amounts and adding our accruals into the figures to come up with what the fiscal year audit report will, amounts will be. So, we'll be doing that over the next two and a half months as our auditors come in and we make our adjusting entries. It is a little bit higher than what we had anticipated, but it's not higher than budget. And if you look at page 131, that has the total general fund revenue, and you can see that's also a little higher than we had budgeted. So, hopefully, we'll end up close to where we expected, and both are a little bit higher than we had budgeted. So, next thing I want to discuss with you is page 132, just looking at the management fund and the physical plant, the equipment fund. Both of those property tax amounts, you see, come in about 99.5% of what was budgeted and what we levied, and that's a usual amount, usual percentage for us. So, it's almost 100%, but not quite. So, just wanted to make you aware of those things. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the quarterly budget report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to Ed Programs Policy Strategy Committee.
All right. I'm going to go ahead with the motion, and then we'll go into discussion. I move that the Board of Education approve district membership with the Iowa Association of School Boards.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve district membership with the Iowa Association of School Boards. Discussion.
Back in June, the Iowa Association of School Boards came and presented to us, asking for our membership to come back into the association. We separated our membership from them, I spent four years, okay, for four years, because of some unethical ways that they were handling themselves. So, we terminated our membership with them and continued to watch how they revamped, reorganized, and put things together, and saw that even though that we weren't using them officially, we still kind of used them for board training activities that are available to us. They provide us with policy format. There's a lot of legality things in running a school board that are very beneficial to school districts, but for the most part, they have really done an about-face change on the way they conduct business. They are now having much more transparency on how they spend their money, which was the biggest red flag and downfall that they had from before, and they're conducting their meetings as open meetings, which I was kind of surprised to hear that they didn't do that before, considering their school board and we do so many as open meetings. So, after talking with, after they presented, we all kind of had the feeling that we are probably going to be, all of the other districts that have since, they've all come back to joining, including Des Moines, which is, we were following all the UEN recommendations as well as what they were doing, and just to kind of seeing what people were doing. And a lot of other school districts came back last year, and I think, would you say maybe two school districts in the whole state of Iowa are not members or are not going?
I believe we're one of three currently, but I think of those, all three are considering a possible membership.
Yeah. So, I don't know if you want to add to that based on?
I'd like to make a comment, too, if you have a chance.
No.
Well, I was on the Board when we made that decision. I think I was the only one on the Board at that time, and it was due, as you suggest, to some perceived and real malfeasance about financial disclosure, and I remember at one point, they said they were advised by their attorney not to disclose their financials. And we said, "Well, you know, are the attorneys running you? Are you running?" So, anyway, we made a decision, and I think a right one at the time, not to maintain a relationship, and yet, there were some services that were key that they were providing, particularly then the financial side, which I believe ISFIS picked up for us, Margaret Bookton and Larry Siegel, who provided additional services. I assume we're continuing with them, and so we're not necessarily going to be embracing any of those prior services that were more financially oriented. I'm delighted that the IASB has cleaned up their act and their, and I'm glad we can reinstate our relationship with them. They do provide great trainings, and they have a new director. I know they have a lot of new Board members, so I think it all looks very positive and delighted that we could rejoin when we are.
I think we at least need to, you know, as it was talked at the meeting, give them a chance, just to see, and I think that there can be a lot of benefit from, I know being a new school board member, I went to their
Orientation.
Orientation and conference, even not as a member, we were allowed to attend, and there's great knowledge of not knowing anything about how this organization runs, to be able to tap into that and to really, you can't be a strong Board unless you have educated Board members, and I think we need to do probably even a little bit more with new Board members than we've been able to do to get people up to speed and to understand that there is a process that you have to follow, and when you don't follow that process, that's when things go awry, as in their process, but they provide the structure of getting the formats together. I refer to the policy of different things on how school board protocol should be, because we're still given that information and that's available to us. So, even as a courtesy, they allowed us to tap into a lot of that information, not as members, so.
Absolutely. Well, I think
I think you've covered it fairly well. Four years ago, they had significant issues with some decision-making and some of their financial expenditures. Just to keep it in perspective, this is about an $11,000 a year membership fee. So it's not a large, extremely large sum of money, but it's about tying our name to an organization and making sure that organization brings credibility to the table. And they certainly went out and hired some highly credible folks around the state to sort of right the ship and reviewed the way they did business and made sure that they were open and brought back to the table, hopefully restored their good name. And districts have chosen, because of the reasons you've mentioned, to rejoin, and I believe it's really good for Dubuque to have those services available.
That conference in November is fantastic. We should all, I have it in my calendar, I'm going to do everything I can to be there. If we can be at that, it's such a nice thing. It was at that conference where I went to a session led by Larry Murphy, Pat Murphy's brother, on how to work with the community to successfully create streams of revenue through taxation, but making sure people are on the same page. And that was, he became one of our consultants for the one-cent sales tax, who worked with the chamber to help get that passed, so that was very beneficial. There's just good stuff there. That's unlike the NSBA, which is, that's the National School Board Association. You know, there's a lot of pomp and circumstance, but to the degree, it's expensive and to the degree that it actually trickles down and makes an impact on a kid in a classroom at Audubon Elementary School in Dubuque, I don't know. When you go to this one, the whole day is just dripping with good stuff about what the state of Iowa law is and how it impacts our schools and the waters in which we navigate here in the state of Iowa.
Any other questions? All right, there is a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. New business, any new business? All right, board member issues? Administrative concerns, issues?
Just that we had a lot of really excited folks in this room today as they begin the 14-15 school year, instructional coaches and principals and some curriculum folks working on the teacher leadership system. So as far as we're concerned, we're in full swing. I know the students out there don't want to hear this, because they want to hold on to the last few weeks of summer, but we are full steam ahead to the 14-15 school year. It'll be exciting. It'll be a great year.
Outstanding. Anything regarding upcoming board meeting, other than you'll be within a week of starting that school year?
We'll be within shouting distance. Things will be in fast motion at that point, but it'll be a normal business meeting. Two days before our opening with staff.
The facilities committee meeting is moved to August 6th?
That's Ed Programs.
Ed Programs is moved to the 6th.
Yes. I'll be in the 1st on the 4th.
Here are no other issues. We are adjourned.